I'm not she is.
Oh.
I pray she might, but she ain't going.
Is this another one, not the rest?
Yeah, that's the water portion. There's a sewer portion and there's a water portion.
Whoa.
So altogether, three ninety-five a month.
What's a hundred ninety-five twice?
Hundred ninety-five plus two hundred.
A hundred ninety-five twice.
Well, but I said one is last month, because I got the bill right after the meeting.
Okay.
I have one of these bills.
Well, you won't get one.
I assume I'll need by what I said in that email.
I got that, I said one. Had to keep that.
Hey, well, if you win, you split it with me, right?
I'm right.
Okay.
Half a million is nothing.
What if you go in the hole to shop a pay?
No. Gambling's against my religion.
It's against mine, too.
It's, it's split up. I'm gonna write you some buy it and keep cards, okay? Keep you on track.
Ah. Yeah?
Yeah.
It's almost like you're like.
So when I slip them to you, I'm like, shut up, Larry. No life.
Don't find you anything too long, I've got to take a government.
I'm just giving you something to talk about.
Oh, oh, why?
It's seven o'clock.
I know.
He thought they're writing his name.
What's your point?
It's about me. About sign language.
All right. The Constitution stands for the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, without doubt. And individual, liberty and justice for all.
All that aside for me.
Don't switch.
Hey Garrett, how would we go about changing that? What do you think? You did mention.
The auditor, auditor.
Auditor, how would we go about changing auditor?
No, that's a small ability, just to go out change. Call out, just on the quotes. So, except not an appointed position or anything, that's just a contractor you hire.
I think their ding is pretty good.
Yeah, call out, I mean, I'm sure to check. It's getting expensive.
What's that?
I said, they're getting, they're getting more and more expensive. But, you know, you can sort of call out.
Okay. A minute from the August twenty-three to be approved. On favor. Bills to be approved.
So, when we talk about bills too, I also want to talk about petty cash. So, um, I wrote a check, went to the bank and asked them, and I talked to the auditor some things. So I wrote a check to me, is what they told me to do, memo at petty cash. Um, because I would like to have petty cash, because sometimes I don't have money to buy the supplies I need. Like I had to buy a toner cartridge, that was pretty expensive. So, and I will purchase a computer. And that was the other thing, and I did bring some printout to kind of show you what I was looking at. But, um, on the petty cash, on the budget report, there is an account for petty cash. But there's, it says fifty dollars in there, and I haven't seen it. But I did find these tucked away back. And so I talked to the auditor, I said, this is what I found, and I showed it to Guy Barris, because I didn't want to be solely responsible. Because there's very lack of, like, it doesn't add up. So in this bag, there was twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. And the receipts in here are old, like, two thousand nineteen. There is one, twenty-twenty-two. Um, so not a lot of money, there's some registers for savings. I don't know why they're there, nothing written in them. And then this bag had ten dollars and an old Home Depot credit card. In Deborah's name. And again, a receipt book, really old. And I also found this folder in the files with petty cash receipts. But again, they're really old. So she said, just deposit the money, zeroed out, it was not a lot of money, and we're gonna start anew. And I will keep the check register. And I ordered a lock box to keep it in. I want to have a higher amount than fifty bucks, because you have a lot of food and stuff. And I'll start putting it in the budget report, too, so that it's there.
We got bids on the computer?
I don't know about bids.
Well.
There's not a lot of places that sell computers these days. But yes, I did print out kind of some options of what I was looking at.
So how much did they run?
Altogether, if I were to purchase, so this is a, uh,
Camera?
Hard drive, affordable hard drive. So that I can store files on that. I would have to buy new Microsoft Office, because I don't know where the old one is, kind of priced to be accurate. Um, this is a color laser printer. And, let's see, I thought I have two. How many second one? Might be at home.
So how much do you do it for?
Um, roughly fifteen hundred dollars for all of that.
Petty cash, you can do that for me.
Well, that's why I wrote a big check.
If you look at the budget, she wrote in twenty-five hundred.
And then.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, um, do you want to have petty cash? Because sometimes guys spend his money for, you know, he has water and sewer, do you have one for each account? How does that work?
Sure. I'm sure you're impressed, I should pay for those expenses.
Yeah. So maybe next month you'll see some more for water and sewer.
So is that twenty-five hundred a month?
No, that's not a fine, that's so that I can purchase a computer, printer, if the, I am not saying it needs to be black and white, it doesn't bother me. Sometimes it would be nice to have color, if I want to show you a chart or something, which will happen when we do budgets.
That's why I said, you ought to just take a check.
Sometimes it's a little hard, I don't know. Because I don't know the exact amount. Like, the computers that I was looking at, I looked at them a week ago, and then last night, I looked at it, printed things off, and the prices have totally changed. So. Do you trust me?
Fifty percent of that goes in her pocket. Fifty percent of that goes in her pocket.
Yeah.
She wins.
Split it, and then you're gonna go to Elko.
IBM. A five-hour I am beginner.
You're not record with that, just so you know.
Well, and you're gonna realize receipts anyway, so.
Yeah, I will keep all the receipts.
I think cash, because you don't want to order some stuff online, and you can't do that without a check.
Yes, exactly. You go into the store, and computers are slim-kicking in the store.
Yeah, you just don't.
You have better deals.
Exactly.
I will supply, I'll keep receipts, I will keep a check register, just like I do for checking accounts. And I will have a lock box.
And you're right, and not everybody's got a ton of money laying around to go buy supplies for an office. And I know it's not twenty-five hundred, but I agree with the petty cash thing, and I agree with just getting that and doing it.
So for this one, it's the twenty-five, and next month, that one?
It would be like, say, two hundred or something, right?
Well, or maybe nothing. Like, I feel like we should keep the balance between five hundred to a thousand. You guys, I guess, can decide that.
Well, I don't know what you buy for the office, so I'm gonna have to, I'm just gonna just.
I would say roughly, like, I don't know, I feel like I spent at least a hundred bucks each month. Fifty dollars definitely isn't.
No, fifty's nowhere near, but I don't know what, I don't, I haven't done petty cash in some of the years, I couldn't tell you the team that I had. But you shouldn't be paying out your own profit.
I will be thorough, in my head.
Oh, I know, okay. I think you should just get it, just get your stuff.
Well, put your stuff on there.
All right, I guess. I just don't want to give a lot of money out for petty cash.
Well, I get that. It's, this time.
It's a big responsibility on me, too, like, it's going in my name.
Yeah, I mean, for this month, it's gonna be a large amount because of the computer app. And going forward, we can figure out what we think as a, as a amount, but it can't be fifty dollars, because that's just not.
Oh.
Like, the ink toner for, was eighty bucks.
Yeah, so you can, yeah, I see exactly what you're saying.
How much does a colored printer compare to a white, black, and white?
Well, this depends on what kind of color, this one's a laser one, I didn't think three hundred bucks was bad for a laser one, and it had really good reviews.
Written for a printer that's old, that's laser colored, I'm talking lines of excellent deal.
And Guy said he would take that one and use it over there, so I don't think he needs a printer.
So we gotta.
And Guy also said he may need to update his computer over there that's up online, because it does the same thing, it gets weird.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to be hacked.
And if you're too old.
What's that?
Guy needs to get a card and come to see counsel.
I don't know why.
He knows, yeah.
Anyway, so future.
Just like turn it off.
Tell him to, no, because if he's got old Windows, they can have those, they really can see.
If you buy like Microsoft stuff, can we put on two?
That was a license for just one, and I couldn't see a multiple one in buying the software like that. Like, you can do a monthly subscription, or a yearly subscription one that covers ten. But, that's what I need for my home, because my kids use it and stuff, too, but. I didn't think you guys would want to hear this description.
I don't buy it, but that's right.
So is everybody all right with that?
I make all the money. They do?
I make them by second, and you have to skip on your computer and stuff?
Well, that's fine, though.
Kind of.
You have that part, or?
Partal, no.
Oh, that part, petty cash.
Okay.
Excuse me. How's that one sound?
No, you'll say all in favor.
All in favor. Yeah, yeah.
Who's your favor, someone?
And then FY twenty-two and twenty-three, general fund?
Oh, there's the two. Um, okay, so to do the road budget, we have to amend this current year's budget. So that is what this is, this was the notice that went in the paper. We're gonna pull eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars from revenue that was, well, old revenue that was sitting there. And then, so, I added that to the fund balance of bringing it forward. And then I changed, I, their colors, sort of, their gray. But I highlighted the ones that got changed, so street maintenance. I took some out of equipment maintenance and moved it to the street maintenance, but Guy said he needed some left in there, because he has some tractor repairs he needs to do.
You know, like, two years ago?
Yeah, I told him to get them done this month, so that it's in there, and that doesn't go away. And then, um, I took some out of miscellaneous expenses. Which is also where I'll hide the computer. Part of it.
So we have to make motion to approve that, right?
Uh, first, if you notice, especially you show the public hearing. If you go to the public hearing, there's no hearing, but.
Okay.
Go to your public hearing. That's super good.
Anybody have comments out there about the budget of this year?
I guess not.
Come on, Kurtz.
And then close it.
Spend it all.
Can you close it?
Huh?
Spend it all. Just get rid of it.
And then you do a motion to approve the amended ordinance and the waiver of required reading.
And then that is, the date and stuff would need to be filled in. And I wish you'd read. Except the amended.
The amended ordinance, yeah, the amended ordinance, and then waive all required readings.
And waive all required readings.
I see.
And that would be supposed to be by a roll call, right?
A roll call, okay, well, you gotta ask each one of us if you agree.
You agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's, that's just, do you second your agreement?
FY twenty-three, twenty-four, signed ordinance.
Yeah, so that's the new budget coming up for this next coming fiscal year, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So. That's this.
You already had the public hearing on that one?
Yeah, so now we just, we need to approve it and sign it, right?
So, so again, it would be just a motion to approve the new ordinance budget, appropriations, and waive all required reads.
And move to approve the new budget and waive all required readings, is that right, Gary?
Also.
Call the.
That's roll call.
Roll call again.
Did you call, I think?
Well, he did. He didn't actually say our names, but he looked at us, he was, yes.
I don't know these guys, I don't know.
Rifting one, I think, too.
So what's in the road budget for next year?
Fifty thousand.
That is what I need for it, though.
Well. If we could have got those guys to done the state highway, I understand that it was about a half or less of what they had to pay for chipsy.
Is that who did first? Is that who did first wrote?
Yeah.
They're, they're up to nice.
Well, now, they're nice now, we'll see how they hold up. And if they hold up through the winter, and I don't see any reason why, couldn't do it next summer.
Why do you look at this road?
That's all they're doing?
That was that? That's all, that's it.
I thought there was more coming, I don't really think that road, so I was like, I'm sure they're doing something.
Well, I'm probably like, on your face for it, is, oh, no, that's worse.
That's true.
Not really, the one big expense was the equipment. Because you got that, comes from Blackwood. And all gravel had to come from Blackwood. So, probably six is over, you know, whole island.
Yeah.
The equipment expense, and all that good stuff. Anyway, and I don't know, I don't know if that, I feel it'll be coming around here next year or not.
Well, do they have that, do they have two?
Do they?
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Did they? Well, it looks pretty now.
Yeah.
I hope it holds up. Okay, I guess we're done with that.
We got one more. Well, this.
We get two.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Okay, electronic, electronic payment. And I guess that's, Robin was about that.
Well, so this is a revisit. So, finally got more information, and I could not print it very well, I tried to print it at home, too, to get a color. But you can go to the website, except dot glue, if you have your phone. Um, yeah, except dot glue. But, they do process checks that way, too. You, they have control of setting up like an auto pay, so that it just does it monthly. And then, I can batch out however frequent I want, but also the account number, name, everything, it sounds pretty slick. Uh, so if you remember the cost, if everybody were to use it, you're looking at about a hundred and fifty dollars a month, roughly. Hundred forty, hundred fifty. Is that worth it? Yes or no? Or do we just keep doing what we're doing? I don't see anything that would have enough using it.
Why would I go to use it?
I don't see where we'd use it that much.
Minimum, you're gonna pay fifteen dollars a month to have the little website access, because we don't have our own. So, I don't carry their waiver, many expressed interest in having, yes, I do hear that.
So, forgive me, because I can't quite remember, if we had our own website that was secure, would that make a difference?
It would take away the fifteen dollars a month.
So I looked into that, and I couldn't remember why.
Well, because we would have a platform. So they're giving us a platform for fifteen dollars a month. And then the other risk, and you said it is really low risk, because it's not published on a website or something. Um, but you could possibly get a bot that's like, dinged it, and charges you ten cents each dinged. So. Or we can just keep telling people it's cash and check, or money, or. Laura, you have spoken up about it, so what are your real costs?
I'm like this, I'm gonna be honest, I don't use checks. Um, I, I mean, it's a, it's just not a cash world anymore.
So, I pay a lot of high bills, like, I go to my bank, and then I can set up.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't have to.
And that's what I asked about last time, were we able to do that, do you think?
Yeah, you can set up your, put in your account info, and you can set it up to do it auto, or you.
Yeah, that's what you, yeah, that's what it sounds like, you do auto pay, right?
No, I.
Are you automatically, you just go and do it yourself every month? But that's allowable, or is this?
Well, they, will they do auto pay with it? I'm trying to remember.
I think.
I think they do, I think they can.
But I just go in there, I'm like, okay, like, I pay, like, my power bill, my phone bill, and just, you know, click how much I want.
And maybe what we could do, like, if you don't want to do this, is, you know, we could, what are the main banks, it's connections, bank, ours, whatever. I could, like, have them give me info, little pamphlets, like, here, you can go do this through your bank, if that's what you want to do.
So, like, when we get our bill, there's an account number on it and everything. I'm, and would it be able to be set up, like, in city base office, with your account number?
They would put in their account number in, so that I can see that, I'll have a back door that I can go in, and see who's paid. And then I can, what they call, batch it, and I can do that once a week, once a month, whatever.
I'm gonna say, hundred fifty dollars a month, so.
So then you can pop, just telling people to go through your bank.
What do you think?
And should we revisit with Rifting here?
So at the least, we would pay fifteen dollars a month if we don't have our own website. If we have our own website, fifteen dollars doesn't matter.
Oh, so.
And think about this, like, there are people that literally don't pay their bill unless Guy comes to their door and collects money.
For what?
How much money do we pay Guy to go out?
Oh, no, we're not going there.
Well, I would say, it's just the fact.
They shouldn't be doing that anyway.
They shouldn't.
Okay, so, if we don't set this up, we, we keep chiding along the way we are, or we go to our own bank and say, pay them every month. And say fifty percent of the people in Baystate use this, how would that cost us, what, seventy-five dollars a month? So, have, can, we're gonna be able to charge them to use it?
So, on the extra fees, so he said, the three percent, they can set that up, I can change that. But he said, I advise you not to do that, I think it's illegal stuff. Um, and then I asked about, like, convenience fee, and he said, no. He said, have it stick to the three percent, three percent is just a little bit more than what they charge.
So we can charge people if they want to use it, which will cover our fees, right?
It doesn't cover all of it, because of the batching process. And we. It offsets it. Can we take a survey and have people? We could, I thought about, like, do you put it in the newsletter and say, would you be interested?
I was thinking something similar.
Find out how many really are in this, I, I mean, it's like the lunch program down at school. Some people prefer to pay the, I don't know, I think they pay three fifty, if they pay lunches online.
If I'm being honest, because I'm me, I wouldn't pay the three percent.
Interesting.
I'd be like, I'm gonna pay an extra three bucks.
Yeah.
Well.
What would you do, Larry?
I think, I just, I'd just write a check.
And newspaper your payment. What would you do, Gil?
I can tell exactly what my wife will do. She will not have anything to do with these companies, as a professional property management accountant, she should sit down all the time. Because they, things go wrong, and she's in charge of budgets, banks, everything, and they, they, you know, Kennedy Wilson will not use those companies at all.
Well.
What would you do, listen to your wife?
He doesn't.
It's like, I'm not paying any attention, what are you gonna talk about?
I think this is like planning a reunion, trying to get a date for planning a reunion. Oh, I can't come there, I can come, I can't come. I think you go ahead and throw it out there like you want, and the ones that want to use it, use it, and the ones that don't, don't.
Still, so stay at night, fifty dollars a month, or what?
Well, no.
How about, let's, I like Pam's idea of the survey, let's just see, let's get some feedback, and see what people think.
And so will people this?
I don't even want to live in Baystate anymore.
You would.
I don't even want to live in Baystate, or how many around the city want it anymore. I don't even want people to live in Bay Salt first. How many around the city will offer anymore? What's the number?
There's a hun, there's like a hundred fifty-one bills that go out. On average, most of them are a hundred dollars, with a few that are more. Uh, like there's the apartment of the one more. There's Idaho Springs, that's a bigger one.
Wow, wouldn't you get that survey, do you think?
No, I think that's a great idea.
I think, let's do a survey and see what the people actually think.
I mean, if you have like ten people that's all that's gonna use it, is it not worth it?
You're right, it's not. Um, I don't know, I don't know what people feel about it. I know I would use it, so I'm like, here, then get out of my face. I'm literally, everything in the internet, like you. I think so. My mortgage paid that way. Paid that way and I feel like.
I do too, unless they charge me extra and then I'm like, I'll look at it.
I have to renew my car license if anyone charges me extra, then I'll just do this all the way.
I'm terrible. I'm like, I used to just drop half cash and I thought I could have been doing that and doing middle class checks. And so, it's like, it's, I never need to go to the bank. I just, I rarely have cash.
How do you go to Mitz and buy an hamburger?
They're fine.
Do you have the other one?
I have them. I called it a few times though.
Oh, what?
Well, there's two. There's the amended one and then this is the new one. You're not done.
What's this?
That's for the new budget. And it needs some.
So, what are we gonna do? You gonna send a deal out and connect whoever they are?
Yeah, I'll put it in. And.
Not the people who read it.
Who wants to go in it next?
Who what?
I'll write something up on you. I saw family on you because he lied. Only lived here for twenty years. I'm like, Alan's sixty-three?
If you tried the little ones, I didn't like that with you. When you drove by, I was like, Sam, it's Pam. I drove by the other day and just happened to glance over and I'm like, holy cow, Pam's got a big yard.
So, was that all on that, Pam?
Yeah.
You got something, huh?
Just general. Is that just general, I mean, I don't have any.
General, what's that?
I don't know if you guys are friends calling us last month, but we haven't had a phone.
No, that's right. I mean, I don't have anything specific to report on anything. I just did a couple of general things. Just that, it was last time I was here, that we talked about a meeting that was gonna be arranged with Firth. I don't know if that happened or not.
I was surprised when the guy had brought out the, it was just their toys.
All right, so, so that one, that one kinda just faded away. I just wanted to follow up with that.
And two, the meeting hadn't happened yet.
Yeah, it didn't sound like it was necessary last month because Guy had visited with their maintenance fellow. Um, so it was just their toys. That was it, so.
The reason for the meeting went away then?
Yeah, so the reason for the meeting went away.
And so, I just wanted to, I just, we talked about us attending. I wanted to follow up on that. And two is, um, and you were talking a little bit about Firth and their, their potential grant, whatever. And, um, there's going to be the, uh, the LTAC, L-RIP grants and things in with, you know, the roads, transportation plans day, the hundred thousand dollars you get for the roads. Just wanna make sure you're aware of that. Probably oughta talk about where you're at in that program, what your applications abandoned in the last three or four years and how you want to proceed with that. You know, they have the, the three things they usually do are the signs, the hundred thousand dollars you can use for road construction and the transportation planning study. But, um, I can't remember when the last time you updated your transportation planning study is. Most of the cities want the, want the hundred thousand dollars for the roads, but your study has to be within five years current or you're, you don't rank well in order to get the hundred thousand dollars for the roads. But I, I checked the list. I don't think, I don't think you're on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four list. And I don't think you're on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three list, so I think it's been a little while since you may have applied for that grant. But I'm not, I'm not sure. Cause I just see the awards, not the ones that, and so. So, and so we probably oughta decide, you know, I guess I'm just asking for if you're, I suppose you're interested, but I'd like to work through what we would like to do. It won't be due for a month or two, but we wanna, just wanna prepare for it, so.
So, what do you need on our end?
I wanna research where, where your last submit was and when the last time you were awarded that money. For example, I think Firth is on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four list for a hundred thousand dollars. And I think there was quite a bit of money in your fiscal year twenty twenty-four because of the, because of the leading Idaho grant money that got passed around by a lot of cities. So, basically just, we were prepared for whatever to say, okay, let's figure out where you were, what you last applied for, where you should be in the program and what the best approaches to move forward. You know, so we can, we can get in line.
I don't think we applied for anything since the sewer project, Kelly.
Not at all.
You know, the couple of years that I've been coming here, we have not applied. Um, but it's, you know, so, and I haven't, any of the council meetings, I haven't heard anything of, heard any applications. So, I don't, it's been, pretty sure it's been a couple of years, so it's, it's gonna be Bay Salt even.
Since I've been here, no.
Yeah, since you, since you didn't put in, but we might as well put in, get in line. The LTAC stuff, you know, it's not a lot of money. But in a little town like Bay Salt, a hundred thousand dollars coming in here for a little budget for a year is a big deal, right? May not be a big deal for Idaho Falls. They don't even get a peep for it, but you know, for little towns like this, it's a big deal. So, and if you're putting in regularly, they, they do a pretty good job of, they really need to quit doing the applications and just rotate out little towns. You get your money every four years or whatever it is. That's what they need to do. But they make you go through a little process and, you know, give you the application. And then they kinda rotate you through anyway, right? So, what you got last year, you can get this year. There's a waiting period if you were successful. Anyway, we wanna, we wanna get you in that program, get you back on that cycle. Um, and just, you just give us permission or, you know, say, yeah, we wanna do that. We'll try, we'll, we'll. Whatever can we get you and figure out what we should be applying for.
Would that, would that other lagoon we're talking about, would that be involved in that or is that separate?
That could be separate. The LTAC stuff's all roads. It's just all road stuff.
Oh.
The lagoon, we've talked about, you know, we need to get that evaluation, that facilities planning study amendment draft up for you. So that we can look at the numbers and say, okay, which direction do we wanna go? What we'll want to do is anticipate in January on that one, submitting a letter of interest again to DEQ for construction dollars or whatever, with whatever direction you decide or direct us to do so. We kinda threw the hail mary last year. We didn't rank high enough and I didn't think we would because we weren't, really weren't ready for it, but.
I thought, didn't DEQ give us approval to do another pond?
No. No, you have to do, you have, we have, we have to finish, we have to do the amendment to your facilities planning study in order to get approval to do something. And if it's do, build another pond, that's the direction we wanna go. We've gotta justify it in that amendment to your facilities planning study, which you approved. We just need to write it, finish writing it and submit it to DEQ for their review. And we need to do that before January, so it's, they have it in their hands. So, when we ask for the letter of interest, we put our letter of interest saying, hey, we want money for this project that, uh, that they can look at and say, yeah, your study recommends that project. We agree with it or, you know. And so you can be competitive when these apply.
Yeah.
You're okay with that, huh?
Yes.
I mean, the LTAC stuff, we might as well get in line and, and do it.
That's a little new for Bay Salt.
I just gotta, we just gotta do a little background and it probably means coming down, coming down to the city and maybe looking through the things again. And, you know, for a half hour or something like that in the next two or three weeks and figuring out when you applied last and what we need, what we need to be applying for on the roadside. On the sewer side, we gotta wrap up the, the facilities planning study amendment, submit it to DEQ so they can approve it, so that we can apply for. That process, you do it in January, you do a letter of interest. If you, they publish a draft, um, priority list, usually May timeframe. It says, here's all the applications received. Here's how we ranked them all. Then they have to put it out for the public comment. Um, and then they, after the end of the public comment, they finalize their priority and then they say, well, here's the projects, here's how they ask for. Let's just make it easy. Project one asked for twenty-five thousand, project two for ten, project three for seventy-five, whatever. They just go down how much money they have and they base them on a priority. They fund them until they run out of money. And then if you don't, if you don't, if you're not high enough ranked and the money doesn't go far enough, you do the same thing that you should do. Cause that's what we did last year. We were pretty low, really low on the priority list because they looked at it and said, well, the amendment's not done. We're not, and, you know, we're not. A lot of other projects had a higher priority, so. And it was really, and actually when we submitted, there's a few things you have to fill out and, and I, I wrote them a letter and I told me on, I talked to them on the phone actually and said, I already know that Bay Salt was not gonna rank high enough because of these reasons. But here's the real situation. And I said, oh yeah, write all that stuff down. It didn't make any difference. So, we gotta, like I would, we have to make the need apparent. And unfortunately, in this business, that means need is based on, have you violated any of the rules? And, um, and is there a health and safety issue? And how much, how much of this project, and in these days, it's how much of your project is associated with climate change and green infrastructure? So, if you're gonna do a lot of energy conservation and renewable energy and work that in your project, but those things all cost more money on your project. So, it's kind of catch twenty-two percent. So, that's the plan. And on the roadside, figure out which grant we're gonna apply for. So, we're gonna apply this year. On the sewer side, we'll put in a letter of interest again in January. Um, based on the results of the, um, amendment to your facilities planning study for sure.
So, do we put down a dollar amount for the roads or what?
Well, what there is, is they'll, they'll pay up to thirty thousand for an update on your transportation planning study. And it's a hundred percent grant. And on the roads, it's a hundred thousand dollars is what you compete for. And all of them are basically a hundred thousand dollar grant. And usually it's like, okay, we have, you take what you're in your budget anyway. I mean, I think it was close enough to what's in your road budget, like fifty thousand or something like that. But you could say, well, we were gonna spend this much, so you basically allocate, well, we'll spend, like if, maybe you're gonna fix a specific, we'd like to fix a specific street. But you look, you try to tie that project to, it's the number one project in our transportation planning studies, the one that has the highest need. And it's gonna be a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, we're gonna put twenty-five thousand of our money in to make, and if we can get your hundred thousand, then we can do the project. And so, you usually put some of your money from out of your budget to apply to that project. Um, so, and so it ends up being a little bit of a, well, we're gonna put fifty thousand on, uh, whatever, chip seal or crack seal or chip seal. But if we can get enough money to rebuild this street by getting a hundred thousand this year, then we'll, we'll put the money there and stay it for a year.
I don't think we, we don't wanna rebuild any streets, do we? Spells? Then, then down?
Down.
We'll knock down the fur.
Could be an overlay, you know, may not be a complete reconstruction, but could be an overlay. Could be, you know, so whatever's asked me on the question. Was that?
I says, rebuilding streets is what's sometimes the question.
It's hard to rebuild much of a street for a hundred thousand dollars, quite frankly, if you tear it all up, you know, but you can do overlays. But I mean, and maybe it's more chip seal and you extend your, you do more chip seal than you would on a normal year or whatever.
Well, we're looking at that. I don't even know what they call it. That DOLA done on the state highway for Schilling to Blackfoot. They said that's a third to half the cost is, the cost is on this chip seal.
Okay.
But I wanna go through the winter and see how that holds up through the winter.
Yeah, the money we, you know, we said, well, apply in, you know, like I said, probably November is when those applications will be due for the LTAC. And we want money when it's available then next summer or whatever anyway, so, I mean. But we wanna get, wanna apply when the applications are due, so.
And you got the paperwork for it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you'll send it down or?
Yep. We'll fill out the application. We wanna figure, we oughta, we oughta decide whether we apply for the hundred thousand dollars or the planning grant money or the signs. I probably, it's probably not the signs because I don't know when the last time you've updated your signs, you know, the, the street signs, whatever. But if we haven't, if your transportation planning study hasn't been updated for like five years, then we're gonna have to do that first. Cause that, that will basically identify all the projects that you ought to be doing for your maintenance. And whether you wanna do it or not, it's just like DEQ, they make you plan before they let you spend the money for construction.
Planning.
You know, a small town like Firth, yeah, you pretty much know what needs to be done, but LTAC, and LTAC tracks all of this in a big database. And they, since all the cities have pretty much done it, they know, you can go to the LTAC database and see every, you know, basically the street in every city and what the priority is for repairing that or upgrading that road or repairing it or maintaining it or what's the next scheduled project and what condition that street is in. They, they grade it on a pavement condition index and, and they, they've, like everything in the world today, it's all about data. And so, they, they, when you do, when you take the money and you do the study, they put all that data into their big database and you pull up their GIS map and see it. And so, they, you know, they're not gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars to do a construction project if you haven't done a plan or your plan isn't updated. Their idea is, we want, we want you to spend a little time thinking about where the best place to spend your money is, so give us a plan first. But if you, but if you did a plan and your plan's updated in three years, four years ago, then no, let's apply for the construction dollars. We'll pull the project out of that plan and say, this project will run for a month or two in our plan the last time we did it, so we're asking for money.
I don't think we're doing anything, Kelly.
Not everybody can run one.
It's been a while. We did your, we did your transportation plan. I was involved in sixteen, fifteen, sixteen years ago.
So, I'm kind of new. So, who do you work for?
Okay.
I know you said last time.
So, my company is Civilize.
Okay.
Civilize is the engineering company I have. I've managed Foreman Associates for sixteen years. And seven years ago, I'd say where I, I started my own, so I started Civilize and, you know, so.
So, you just help cities do a lot of that?
Uh, all their infrastructure, planning, design, you know, roads, sewer, water, bridges, whatever, whatever municipal engineering needs to be done. And I do a lot in, you know, been coming to Bay Salt for two or three years. Um, I do a lot in Manayam, Parker, I've been doing the water project in Clifton. Um, what they're still, but a water project, uh, City Vine and Park, we're putting together a water system there. Um, there's sixty water systems in Vine and Park and none of them are owned by the city and we're trying to, kind of put them all together. So, a bunch of them together is what becomes a municipal water system. Cause we aren't big enough to, all the water systems aren't big enough that have an economy scale that actually solves the problems. You got sixteen connections or twenty connections or eight connections, I think, and so, and the city doesn't, you know, involve, you know. And you can give out a funding if you're a city, if it's a municipal system or better funding, so, if you're private, private owned system or association or whatever, so. So, I've worked in a number of communities like around, around the, around the state. Over the twenty-some odd years, twenty-five years I've been here, I've worked in most communities in this area in some fashion. So, it's just kinda help you find the money so you can do the best you can with the budget you have and solve the problems. So, thanks for asking.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure, cause I knew you talked about sewer lots of times, but it was like.
Husker Brown, I, by the way.
I've seen your name on papers.
Ms. Eric Star, who works with me as well, so. Miss Eric's daughter works with me as well, so. That's it, that's all we have for the night.
Okay.
So we'll, DEQ and we'll go talk to the good folks in Manan. They have council the same night you do, so. Manan, so I, but you start at seven, they start at seven-thirty, so I come to yours first, then we go to theirs last. And it's the night Island Park's the same night, too. See you later.
Trump's leaving again.
So I need to ask a planning question. The insurance guy came in today. And if we want all of the new insurance stuff, we'll go over that next month. But he wants us to update, evaluate buildings and cost. Go through the buildings, see what inventory there is, make sure everything's listed. And he used FERC as an example. He's like, have you noticed how long it's taken to get anything done for their tire stuff? Because that's why. He's like, it's covered, but it's easier if something happens, but there's a list. So he would like us to provide a list. So I kind of thought maybe we could go on a field trip one day and go look, or do you want Guy to ride it, or how do you want it to go?
I do a field trip.
Field trip? So if we did a field trip, do you do that on a city, city meeting night? Do you do that any day? Do you have to publish that?
If you don't have a forum, you don't have to publish it. So I wouldn't do a field trip with the whole council. Just maybe two. Then you have three, and then your other, if you're not making decisions, it's not technically an open meeting, but it's just to start to smell that, you know, and you've got a forum.
Okay, so less than three.
Less than three. So you do two council members or a council member, the mayor, whoever kind of wants to help. Would be the best, citywide, for you.
I would also recommend you take a video camera with you, so that way, you know, you're trying to explain what something is, like the pumps and everything. You just, these are the pumps, this is this pump, that pump, that pump, chair, this is this building, walk around it. That way, you have a visual copy and you give them a soft copy as well, and they would love that. It makes it a lot easier all around.
Don't we want to set that up now?
Yeah, I mean, Brittany's not here. I don't know who wants to go through. Anybody want to walk through the buildings?
Who's my suggestion to do it?
Okay.
Just have to shave off some cats.
I did go, yes.
Cam? Do you wanna see if Brittany wants to go first?
Yeah, mine works better on Friday. Right?
Yeah. We can talk about the, you know. Brittany's busy.
Or I guess during the flood, I guess.
Or do you just wanna say a date and call Brittany, because there's one and you, so if she wants to go, she can. You evidently don't wanna go?
I, I can't immediately go.
You want?
I said I can go, if she wants to go to climb or.
You wanna go?
Hey, better walk in here.
You'll be in there, of course. I'm headed out of here, buddy. I know. So, so our water bills.
How about water bills?
We got an outstanding water bills.
There's always outstanding.
Yeah, we'll do it after maybe.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, is there anything else? Okay.
All right, you're pushing the turn maybe.
Yeah, you get some turn.